June 9th, 2005. I'd like to say a quick prayer before we start. Father God, we thank you for this day. Thank you for our community. We pray for your vision. We pray for guidance in this meeting. We pray you'd help us to build up our community and may it bring you glory. And in Jesus's name, amen. Stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Corey Roberts.
Here.
Gary Cagle.
Here.
Michael Smith.
Here.
Travis Zills.
Here.
John Morgan.
Here.
Mayor Naff.
Here. Okay, and then we have, I guess we have them public meeting first.
Public hearing.
A public hearing, okay. Greg Beimer from Klein Peters Consultants is here to run this part.
Thank you very much. This is the second public hearing of the two that are required by the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs.
Yes, I'll thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't helping. I'm not cooperating.
Oh, no.
So, second public hearing tonight, we have with us representative from the engineering firm, MS Consultants, going to talk a little bit about, give us the 50,000-foot project description, tell you what we're applying for. We are applying for $750,000 grant. That application is due on June the 20th, so it's just around the corner. Then in August, we will know whether or not we got funded. But right now, come on up and let's talk a little bit about the project.
Hi.
Hello.
I know a few of you here.
Yeah.
Project is, just kind of give you the three main parts here, is the water treatment filter number one. There's two filters in the treatment plant. So, filter number one has a leak in it at the bottom and is currently shut off. Otherwise, it just floods the floor. That needs to be replaced. To replace that, we gotta take the roof off, get a crane to lift it out, put a new one in, put the roof back on. It's not a small project. I think it's like 12-foot in diameter. And it's made out of aluminum. It's about 14, 16 feet tall as well, too. The next portion of the project is replacing the water meters, the encoders on the meters, which will help increase accuracy, as well as provide a digital forum or a website that will allow the customers to be able to go onto their account and open it up and see their water usage kind of like in real time. So, you're not waiting the 30 days to find out your water bill. You can see if you have a leak or high usage, or you've watered the garden, and how much it costs to water the garden and stuff. It gives you more of a real-time feedback. And as part of that, we have to put in what they call gateways, which are like cellphone repeaters. So, we're talking about putting one at the fire station over here on the tower and one out at the water tower. That way, it can automatically use radio waves to talk to these meters that are in your front yard. So, it's constantly like every, I forget the exact number, like every 10 seconds or 20 seconds, it's pinging each meter so it knows exactly all time what that water usage is. So, those are the components of the project. Does anybody have any questions that I might be able to help you with?
Isn't there an app or something? Is there an app that they can use for to get their water usage, or?
I don't know if there's an app, but I do know that there is a website.
Okay.
I can check and find out if there is an app.
Okay.
Neptune, I think, is the manufacturer.
Okay.
But I can, I can sit here and Google that real quick and find out if there's an app. I just don't know that one. But I know that there is a website that each person can check in on our account.
Okay.
Any, any other questions, or additional comments?
Well, I tell you that number one, well, not one of the big complaints we get is they didn't know they had a leak. And this, I'm so excited for this project just for this reason, that now people will be able to monitor their own water usage and know if there's a leak or not.
Well, it also has an alarm feature, I believe. So, if it uses more in a given amount of time than like your past three or five-day average, it'll send you like a text or an email and says, hey, you got a leak, or potential leak. You may be watering the garden and it's the first time this spring or something, and it's not averaged it out. But if you do something normal that's not using extra water, then it will alarm you.
That's, that's gonna be great. That'll be really a big improvement, big improvement.
Any other questions?
Since we have the Neptune system, there's no upgrade to that?
I think there is to the software. Just because they're a newer series encoder, which is the little digital head that sits on top of the meter.
And I was gonna comment, if you're not familiar with the water department, you might think, well, how often does Montpelier have somebody that gets a water leak that they don't know about?
Yeah.
But I think every month, you write off, or.
It's very regular. Yeah, it's, it's regular.
And it's, yeah, it's much more than I thought it would be.
Right. Yes, it is. And it's, it's a pain. It's, you know, so everybody's, so this'll be a big improvement.
Yeah. Any, any other comments or questions? Okay. Mayor, thank you. This fulfills the requirements of the public hearing?
Okay, all right. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, and communications. I was, I got a text from Tracy Ellison last week, and he sent me a link to YouTube account, basically showing, talking about how Stanley is expanding in a production line. It's called Pop Tops, I think. And, yeah, but that's a new production line that they're expanding into. So, I'm excited about that. So, that's, it's good news.
Pop Tops?
I think that's right. I might have, yeah, Pop, Pop, Pop Tops, I think. And so, it's, so.
Is this the same one that they were going to expand a few months ago that related?
You know, I, it's not, it's, that one, that one was supposedly EV-related. And this is not EV, I don't believe. So, I don't, I think it's separate. So, yeah, there's a lot of good things happening in Stanley. Any other?
I don't have any.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Okay, Corey motioned.
All second.
Gary second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we have the minutes as presented. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes as shown?
All motion. We approve the minutes from May's meeting.
Okay, Travis motioned.
I'll second.
John second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, new business. First off, I want to say, oh, I guess I should have said this before, but Smith Insurance donated, there's a lot right beside Smith Insurance, which is basically a garden area they, they had set up already. They're donating that to the city. And I just want to say a special thank you to Angel Smith and to Rob Ellinger for that lot donation. That'll be a nice addition to our city park there. It's right, right beside of City Park, so it kind of just makes a nice addition to it. So. Okay, new business. Then, resolution. Did you want to talk about the, did the resolution?
For the grant?
Yes.
Yes. OKRA requires that the council and the.
Which one? Sorry, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. OKRA requires that the city pass a resolution which basically authorizes you to sign any and all documents required to apply for and execute any resultant grant. And then it commits the local matching funds. So, that is the resolution that you have. It's boiler-plated language. We really can't change it, but that is, in essence, what it does.
Have a motion to approve, basically they all made a sign for the OKRA grants.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. John motion, Travis second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, very good. And then up next is Ann Owen.
Good evening. I actually have three things to present to you tonight. We'll start with the recommendations by the Area Plan Commission to change the verbiage. There's two separate locations in the ordinance that it's being changed, so I have to do each one separate. For those that don't know, anytime the APC gives a recommendation, I have to take it to all three towns, Shamrock Lakes, Hartford, and Montpelier, and you guys have to vote on it. So, the first one is Section 405, and they're adding the line, "An appeal of a decision by administrator must be made within 30 days of said decision." Our attorney brought this to the APC so that we could line up with what the state standards are. John is your APC rep. He can probably also share whatever from that meeting, if you have any questions.
I was actually not at the meeting.
That's the one you weren't at? Okay, you'll get, you'll get on the next one then. I have you for that one. But, and basically, there's, there are two very similar ones, but the verbiage is, I have to have each line voted for separate.
Well, do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Which section is it, Ann?
That was, the first one is that Section 405.
Michael motioned.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Margaret has just the paper for you to sign off and put the vote on there so I can take it back. The second one is, excuse me, Section 502. And again, the APC gave recommendation. It will say, have the line added, "Any such appeals must be filed within 30 days of said order requirement, decision, grant, or refusal."
Okay. Make a motion to approve that as well.
I'll make that.
Oh, you got your goosebumps.
Corey motioned. Travis second. All in favor, say aye.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. And the last thing I have, and by the way, these are all, I've been in conversation with your attorney, so he's already reviewed all of these things that we're going over tonight. This one was the meeting John was at. Sandy Palmer is requested a change for 218 West High and the parcel adjacent to 218 West High to change it from industrial to residential. She has a building there that does have living quarters in it. Her brother is going to be moving back to Montpelier and wants to live there, so we need to change that to a residential zone so that he can live there. And the APC gave that a recommendation, favorable recommendation, 802 absent. One of those absent was not John.
That time. Thanks, Ann.
We've had a lot of meetings lately.
Do we have a motion to approve that change?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of the property.
John motioned.
I'll second it.
Michael second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Sandy said, "If it passes through, please convey my great appreciation." And my board was quite excited because they were thrilled to have another new resident at Montpelier, so.
Yeah. Do you know which brother, by chance, or do you? Is it David?
The one that's in.
He's in Oklahoma, St. Louis, St. Louis.
Oklahoma, St. Louis, something like that.
It's, it's her younger brother. I can't think of it.
David, is it David?
David. I believe it's David.
Good. Well, I graduated David, so that's cool.
Okay, yeah, yeah. She, she's excited. He's retiring, so.
Okay, good. All right.
So, he'll be back here, I think she said, this fall. So, we told her, get him here in time for.
Yeah, jamboree?
For jamboree, yeah.
Yeah, cool. All right. Okay, thank you, thank you. And Mike Wilson. Is that from Mainstream?
Yeah. I'm Mike Wilson. I'm with Mainstream and just wanted to provide an update to everybody in terms of progress, because we're in the home stretch right now in terms of the east side of the tracks. We've been done with the west side for a long time. Ran into some pole attachment issues and big delays with our make-ready when we were trying to work with, I believe it was AEP. They'd sent a lot of their crews down to work with the hurricane, then they got back, and then we had our spring storms and everything like that, and they were all around. So, we finally got that through. We actually re-engineered a lot of that and ended up going underground, so we didn't have to wait for pole make-ready, too. So, it bears an additional expense. We're fine with it because it's the cost of doing business just to get it done. And that's one of those things that we really wanted to get done. So, I know that that project had been kind of lingering for a while on the east side of the tracks in particular, though I would say the entirety of the project probably predates my time at Mainstream. Coming into it, you know, I'd say late last year, we've made a ton of progress. I'm feeling very positive about where we're at right now. We're gonna start splicing, I think, probably by midweek this week, and that means we're gonna be doing last mile, which is gonna be from the middle mile. For those who don't know, we can give a quick education. The middle mile is what follows the road, basically. And then the last mile is going to be that part that hooks up from the road and goes to the homeowner. So, that is what we're gonna be able to work on on the east side in probably, I would say, the next week or two. And then we'll have customers on the east side of the tracks after that. So, we're making, making a lot of good progress, and I think that delay, that time of delay is over with because we don't need to wait for anybody else. We own the whole process now. So, it's a happy place to be when you're a tech company trying to put infrastructure in, and you don't have to make phone calls and sort of be the customer and ask for help. And, you know, we're beyond all that now. So, we've got full control of the timeline and feeling good about it as well. And I would say this, too. On the west side of the tracks where we have service, just in the last few months, we're at like a 29% market penetration rate, which that fast is pretty intense for us. It's, that is a fast take. So, clearly, there was an appetite for it, and we want to be good neighbors and good stewards. And I live 45 minutes north of here, and I'm happy to come down any old time you guys need me and answer any questions. But I'm, I'm happy to be the neck to choke. But you also have to celebrate me, too, sometimes when there's some good stuff. But I would like to get, get some more community involvement, too. And so, I've been working with Mayor Naff on that as we get the entire network lit up here. So, we're looking at about two weeks.
Two, two more weeks, and I think people are starting to get a.
Yeah, on the east side of the tracks. West side's already got it.
Good. Oh, that's good.
Yes, yeah. So, we've got, and a lot of happy customers still getting installs on the west side. So, it's, it's actually been a pretty ingratiating experience to read my emails and it's people on the west side saying, hey, this is great. Thank you so much. And nice tweets, good, good social stuff. So, we're feeling good about it.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions or joys or concerns I could answer?
My son is on the west side. He's, he loves it. He's been very happy. So, we're looking forward to getting on the east side now.
All right, all right. Well, you call us if anything changes over there. And it's not just because he's the mayor's son. We'll help out anybody. So.
All right.
All right, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I see Jessica's not here. Okay, Deb.
Good evening. My name's Deb Greider, and I did send each of you an email today. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to look at it. I'm coming because I have concerns with the, what you just approved, changing the 405 and the 502 in the ordinance. And the reason for that is because she, and this is not about a person, this is whoever's in that position. It's not about Ann. So, whoever's in that position makes decisions every day. So, how are you gonna notify people that these decisions are being made so that the person has the right within 30 days to make that appeal? So, I think it's gonna be pretty difficult to post all the decisions she's making. There were four appeals recently filed against the administrator, and those were just brought up at an APC meeting, which John was not at. Sorry, John. I'm calling you out, too. But, and that was one of the reasons they brought up, that they were trying to implement this 30-day thing. And the decision she made was in September of 2024, but the hearing was in 2022. So, that's two, over two years between the time that the hearing happened and the time that the decision was made to take action. So, you're gonna be allotting the public 30 days versus, there was two and a half years there. So, there is IC Code 3674-918.1 tells in there that there is no timeline. Also, I have not found out of 92 counties. I've been through almost every county ordinance, and I'm not finding any counties yet that have that 30-day. It is 30 days for the BZA hearing board for that decision. Also, I also attached that email, a copy of a case in Madison, and the judge also found and found in favor of the people against the BZA because there is no timeline. And I attached that to your email. So, I do have concerns with that. I know you've already voted for it, and unfortunately, public speaking is always after you guys vote, but I did want to voice my concerns about the 30 days. Thank you.
Do you have a response for that, or do you?
The four appeals that were filed were withdrawn. They never even happened, so.
They had a hearing. They did have a hearing on it. I don't.
To accept the withdrawal. That's what we had the court for.
Right, yeah.
If the attorney withdrew it the week of court.
Yes, that's, that is true. But the, but the point is still that those hearings, they did file those appeals. I could tell you the next move that they're making, but it's not my place to do that. It's not over. So, the, and I don't have anything to do with Ann. So, still, that 30-day thing, it was two and a half years before she made that decision, but we're allotted 30 days.
At the time of the hearing in 2022, when it was approved, they approved them, this particular one, through December 31st, 2024. With me having the ability to extend it one year, should there, they still not have all their federal approval. So, in September, they found out they weren't gonna get that approval that year. So, that's why I extended it in September. I could've waited until the December 31st deadline to extend it, but that's when I was supposed to extend it.
The focus, really, the main purpose is the decision. So, let's take that one even out of the picture. And you cannot, there's no way that the, whoever would do it, I'm just gonna say Ann because she's in that position right now, is going to want to post, notify the public of every decision she makes. And then how is the public gonna know she's making those decisions to be able to file the appeal? And I think an appeal should be the first step before you go to court. You want to work things out prior to doing a court case. I just feel like lawsuits and court cases are not the direction we want to go. But when you pull that appeal out of there, that's what you're doing. Because most decisions are gonna be made, and nobody's gonna even know they're made, until months or a significant time afterwards. Do I think there should be a timeline? Probably, but not 30 days. So, anything else?
Do we have any comments or questions?
Do you know why the group withdrew their appeals?
I do.
Would you mind sharing?
I will not. It's not my place to speak about.
Why is that?
Because I'm not part of that group. So, I will not.
How did they get here? Do you know that?
I'm sorry?
Why were they here?
The group? If you want to file an appeal, or you want to file a lawsuit, and I believe, I don't know about the lawsuit, but if you file an appeal, you have to live in the affected area. The affected areas is within a half a mile of the project. If you have a bunch of questions, you can ask.
The people that filed were local people.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, all I ever heard was black group concerned citizens. So, there's another group with a very similar name.
I heard that.
Exact same name.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you.
Thoughts or? Thank you. Okay, and unfinished business, we have Bill Smith. Yeah. Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
I saw some, just a note. When you're pushing a wheelchair around town, and you have an on-ramp in the, in the street, there's no off-ramp.
Oh.
That's a very difficult thing to do when you're pushing a wheelchair. So, I'm just throwing, you know, it's not, it's a problem that's been there forever. I want to thank everybody for Railroad 101. Did you think it was beneficial?
Yeah, I liked it. Yeah, it was good. It was a good program.
I was there. You, you had to leave, didn't you?
No, I stayed.
Okay. I appreciate.
Somebody had to clean up.
I appreciate the fire department providing food and facility and for Chris for doing all the, all the technical stuff that he does. One of the problems I'm having is I am required by FEMA, okay? This, this right here is a memorandum of understanding, MOUs. Anybody familiar with MOUs? We've talked many times. Basically, what it is, is it's a, if, if there's a declared disaster, the commissioners declare disaster in the community, and we run out of funds, the state then will send in funds, hopefully, and which might entitle us to federal funds. Once, on the federal level, they get here, the first thing that they're gonna ask is, they're gonna look, they're not gonna look at the damage or anything that's done. They're gonna come to me and say, where's your paperwork? And if I don't have the paperwork, they're just gonna look at me and say, well, sorry, we're not gonna reimburse you. You're not eligible because you don't have any things. Well, I've gone to several businesses, and it basically says, we, we're gonna purchase something from you or rent something from you during this disaster, and we agree to pay you a certain amount of fair market value. And they agree to the fair market value. This is basically so people don't hike up the price during a disaster. In other words, it might have been $20, now they're charging us $50 an hour. See what I mean? So, I have to have these. I've been going around to several businesses, and I walk in and they look at me and they go, we don't get it. So, what I'm asking you guys to do, if you know any businesses, when I come around and I talk to them about this, they, one, one manager didn't even talk to me. Another one put it in his drawer. They, people don't understand how important this document is. Because if I have this thing full in this small community like we have, and the feds come in and they look at it, they go, oh, man, you guys are on the ball. You got all this paperwork done. Let's talk about reimbursement. So, what will happen is, the city will pay a contractor or for overtime or whatever, the certain amount, okay? If we don't have an MOU with them, then we can't, you cannot be reimbursed by the state or by the feds. Does that make sense? It's a reimbursement process. So, you're, you're on the hook for the money. And the city of Montpelier doesn't have that much money in a disaster situation, or does the county? So, we're gonna have to depend on those above us. So, I'm asking for your help. If you know anybody, businesses, I'm going around talking to them. Please, I'm not out to get them. I'm not trying to get a freebie. I just need the paperwork done.
So, these are just basically what-if disaster contracts that are preventing them from price gouging?
Right. That's basically.
And then the ones with the contractors are just, if they do work for us, which, you know, small community, a lot of these people probably bring their stuff in and help anyway, but it's just helping us by not having to spend as much money because we'll get reimbursed. I mean, it's, I mean, it's all goodwill contract. They're not, they're not losing anything by signing it, or, and then, and nothing may ever happen while they own that business, so.
We go back next year and ask them to sign it again.
Yeah, I mean.
To up it. That's all it is. So, if you know anybody, I'd really appreciate your, your assistance on this. Tell them I'm not out to, you know, I just need the paperwork done. Questions? Mayor, just a side note, do you want to be on the committee for our CEMP workshop that's gonna be held in November? Would you like to be on that committee?
What is that, you know?
Or it's the planning for the railroad accident that's gonna happen in Montpelier? No.
Don't do that. You know, I'll be the worst, I'll be the first to know if there's an accident here.
It's the planning for the workshop.
20 yards from the railroad.
For there might be, what will we do if there is? And if you want to be on that committee to represent the government, I'll send you an invite.
Okay, yes, you'll send me the invite. Yeah, that'd be great.
I thought you might be interested to have an input in it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, and then next Chief Snyder, he's going to talk about speed limits on Main Street. Yeah, I know. There's, there's a copy there if you want to.
Just don't make, just, say, don't make it sound like Bill did.
There's a copy right there for your, for your reference on the table. That's it.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is, yeah, it's evening, I guess. So this is just kind of a follow-up to the prelude that the mayor discussed at the last council meeting where we talked about adjusting the speed limits up and down Main Street a little bit to maybe enhance safety a little bit down through there. As maybe some of you remember back several years ago, we had a young fellow that was tragically killed. Got run over, a ball went out front of a car. Kepler and her family suffered a tremendous loss, as well as the, the entire community agreed with the family in that. Although speed wasn't a factor in that, what we're essentially trying to do is, is, is create a speed, a speed zone that enhances reactionary time in the event something like that, you know, heaven forbid we're to come, come our way again. So and obviously the slower you're going, the less distance your vehicle's traveling in. As we get older, our reaction, I'm saying this from personal experience here, the older you get, your reaction time slows down a little bit. So if your vehicle's traveling, you know, less distance at a certain speed, your reactionary time is increased to, to get the vehicle stopped. So, and that, we, that, we've got some doggone beautiful trees down on the Main Street now, so I hate for people just to fly by them a hundred mile an hour and miss that. So the other thing this can do to, and I'll get into the nuts and bolts of it here in just a little bit, is will also enhance safety downtown, which would prevent collisions with people pulling out of parking spots, I believe, as well as backing out of parking spots. Again, all goes back to the principle of reactionary time. So what I'm proposing to you, and I talked with the mayor about this, is that from the very south end of Main Street where the cities, right away, I guess, so to speak, are the two streets that we travel the most, Franklin Street and Main Street come together, is that we, we start a speed limit of about twenty-five miles an hour all the way down Main Street. Is that right, Mayor?
What, what, are you talking about the south? And you're talking about County Road six thirty where the city starts?
No, no, I hadn't, I hadn't gotten to that point. So, so just essentially starting the speed zone from twenty-five mile an hour all the way through town until we get to Monroe Street and then decrease the speed from Monroe Street down to Windsor Street to twenty mile an hour.
Because right now, it's, if, if you're coming from south, the orange line, it's fifty-five miles an hour until you get to Chestnut, which goes to thirty, and then somewhere on Main Street goes up to thirty-five and that carries you through downtown. Thirty-five miles an hour, that is way too fast to be going downtown.
So, so the thing that always struck me is, is, is kind of oxymoronic is that we have a, we have a thirty, thirty-five mile an hour speed limit through Main Street, but we have a twenty-five down State Road eighteen. I never, I never understood that.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we're trying to do is just try to bring things into balance here a little bit and try to enhance safety for, for, for people in our community as they're using those areas. The average speed, by the way, that I've, that I've set is, did kind of an informal study on Main Street is anywhere from thirty-five to about forty-two. So, and, you know, it could be said, well, why aren't you guys enforcing? We do stop some vehicles, don't get me wrong, but we don't write a lot of tickets on that. We try to use education as opposed to getting into somebody's wallet or in their pocketbook first and foremost. But again, that's just the ones we catch. And, you know, forty-two mile an hour down Main Street is, is, is too fast, way too fast.
So I, I guess we're talking about lowering the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five, right there at the city's edge, coming down the Chestnut, making it twenty-five miles an hour, that goes to Monroe Street, which then from Monroe, Monroe North is all twenty miles an hour.
Yeah, it's, it's, I know it's hard to, hard to fathom, but it is fifty-five mile an hour until you get to right around the area where Jake Michael's house is at, then it goes to thirty. So, and, and what the mayor had discussed is actually kind of, is kind of, is kind of a, a steady break or decline from fifty-five to forty-five and then down into the twenty-five and then down into the twenty. And again, if this were to pass, we'll try to use education as our first source of compliance. And, you know, obviously I'm sure that we're going to be writing some tickets on it. I'd be remiss if I, you know, overlooked that. But I, but I think we're going to definitely put a heavy influence on education first.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm good with all of it.
Something else that, you know, just a concern I have because I live on Windsor and Maine, is the amount of people that run that stop sign. It's crazy. And, and most of them are rock trucks.
Which, no, which stop sign?
From Glansey's?
Yeah, coming from, yeah, towards my house, you know, right there in front of Glansey's.
Right there, okay, all right.
But, you know, even going down and, and like going back to the Stone Quarry, you know, they'll turn that corner thirty-five, forty mile an hour. I mean, that, I mean, you can look at the sidewalk on the other side of the road, there's black rubber on it where they go up on the sidewalk. I would actually like to see there be a stop sign. You know, I mean, there are a lot of kids in that area now. You know, there's even a, they're, they're picking kids up there in the mornings for summer school.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, and those rock trucks, they, they haul down there and they just run those stop signs. So I watched one the other day, it was a black one with a red American flag on the side of it. I mean, he, he ran it so bad, he almost hit a white car, you know, I mean, so I would like to see there be a stop sign, but.
Well, let's, we'll think, let's, let's, let's look at that, but.
One thing at a time.
Yeah. Let's look at that.
I mean, we got.
We're putting new signs up.
Six thousand dollars in signs probably here.
That's right.
All else being said Travis, we can help recoup that loss.
I heard you say we only get like six cents a ticket.
Give me a camera, I'll put it up on my house.
Better one, raise your right hand, we give you a badge.
I'll make a motion that we change the speed limits on Main Street.
Okay, Travis motion, Michael second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, all right. But is the, is there anything else we need to discuss? Yes.
Oh, I don't even want to talk about this, but I've had, I've had two residents come to my house in the past week over our chicken concerns. So do I want to talk about chickens? No, but I have to. So we've got some chickens that's running loose, so down, and I went and talked to Chief Snyder about this. So I think we need to send these folks a letter, but they're running loose. There's no, there's double the ten chickens plus ducks. So they're getting in neighbors' property, tearing up their garden, and they've got manure all over everybody else's property. So we're going to have to do something about it. So to me, on my golf cart rides, we, we're, we, we've opened up a can of worms, in my opinion, about this with, with the chickens. Because this stuff has also brought junk, mosquito infestation with different little pools and ponds and all this stuff. So a couple of bad apples are going to run it for the rest of the bunch, but I think we need to send.
Well, that's why you have the ordinance. They're indirect, you know?
I understand, but we're going to have to start, we're going to have to start enforcing it. Send letters or whatever. But my opinion is, because there's a language barrier here, okay? So I, I, I think we need to send something out in our water bill or whatever, and then sometimes this doesn't happen on social media. You don't get folks that look at stuff on social media. So to me, I think every resident should get a letter. Because we've really not done that. So.
Gary, I've had it in the paper, the full ordinance.
Not everybody reads the paper.
Yeah, but the more you know, the more people that know.
I'm just, I'm just saying it's not going to hurt us to send a letter out to everybody. That's my opinion about it. Because that'll, that'll, we can point blank, this is the ordinance, this is how it's read, this is what you can and can't do and can and can't have.
Is, do you know of more than one? I mean, how many, how many people do you know that's in violation right now?
That's chickens running loose? Well, I, I could tell you two of them. One's on this end of town, one's on the south side of town. So now do they have them run all the time? I don't know. The one, the one little neighbor comes seeing me says that when the kids get home from school or daycare or whatever, the first thing they do is let the chickens out. So I just, do I want to talk about chickens? No, but we're at that point where we're getting complaints and it's looking bad. So I just think we need to send people letters.
Or have a constable of the law deliver one, hand, hand deliver one to the people that are in violation of said ordinance.
I understand that. I, I just, and I, I know, I know that Chief Snyder.
My letters have been pretty effective, I got to say. I've, I've been doing, of course, I've been addressing a lot of property issues and I've been pretty happy with how the response of these letters that they, there's been a few people that have not complied, but there's been, for the most part, I'd say over half have, have complied. So I.
Like I said, we got a, we got a couple that might possibly run it for the whole bunch. So I, to me, to know that we're, we're getting to everybody, I just think we need just, we, I've got, over the years, I've got many flyers on my water bill. Why can't we do it for this? That's all I'm asking.
That's, that's, that's a good point and I, I think we can talk about that at the Board of Works meeting and if you want to make a motion and we can probably follow through with that.
So if I can add one thing, I wrote real black once about.
Wasn't dumb.
Do we need to talk, do you need to talk up here?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, so real quickly to that point, just to kind of piggyback off what Councilman Kegel says, in all fairness to Councilman Kegel, he's trying to be very diplomatic about this in the, in the conversations that he and I had. I told him that, you know, myself or someone else in the department would gladly go down and, you know, bring the concerns to the residents' attention. However, my, my speaking of that language is probably going to be done through my phone translator because I don't speak Spanish. So, but, but with that being said though, Councilman Kegel said, was there, is there another way? He said, I don't want the police showing up at people's house if we can avoid that, just to not have that image that we're trying to strong-arm them. And I, I recommended that this was something that the Board of Works could take up and send a letter and try, try, you know, try a kinder approach first and then if it doesn't, then we can go down and do that. And I think that's what he was looking after. So I understand that he's, he's, he's a little hot under the color about this and he's receiving.
Well, I'm not hot under. I just, I, there's a language barrier and I, I think we, we've missed the boat a little bit, you know? I, I wouldn't hear when we voted about the chickens. That, that was one of the times I was sick and missed them, so I didn't get a vote on it. But I just think we can do a little better job with communication and go through every aspect of how we're going to communicate to folks. If they want to live here, then we need to try to communicate to them. Besides just having the police show up on their door and say, hey, get rid of your chickens, you know?
Yeah, and I think.
He's not the chicken police.
No, but I do like barbecue and teriyaki, just so you know. So, so again, in all fairness, you know, Councilman Kegel's not trying to be the rain cloud on anybody's party or anything like that. He's just, you know, he wants to try to find a way that doesn't involve somebody from the police department going down and exerting, you know, that authority on them and trying to, you know, a little diplomacy with the letter first.
Yeah, I think a letter goes first, yeah, I, I agree.
I think a letter maybe with the translated ordinance.
Well, yeah, we, we could, we could do that. Any more, you can just put your phone right over, you know, if they have phones, they can.
In this case, the kids are the translators. The kids are in our public schools, so they know English. The parents do not. So do they truly understand what's going on with what we're asking them to do and not to do? That's, we just need to clarify that.
Okay, okay. Well, I.
And I think, I think, you know, if we talk to the kids and they're able to express what's, what's in there to them, to the parents, I think that that's more than adequate at this point because we're just, we're trying diplomacy over, you know, strong-arming somebody at this point. So, and I, I agree with, with Gary on this one. I think that's the right approach to take first and foremost.
We're not supposed to use children as translators.
Well, they're on kids.
It doesn't matter if you don't use the children.
Well, if they don't speak English.
They have to have an adult translator because you can't tell if the kids.
I can tell you they'll be more accurate than I would be.
Well, they, they're, they're here. I, I'm sure they have some access to somehow translate.
I think, I think a lot of it would depend upon the age of the, the kids too. I could, you know, they could be asked if they, you know, if they feel comfortable doing that, if they feel like they could explain that.
That's fine. I, I, and I don't want to drag this, this out. I just, I, I just had two separate neighbors knock on my door and that's fine. But I, I spent an hour on my Sunday talking about chickens.
I know one of the people that Gary's talked to because they've talked to me, we, Chris and I have talked.
And then the other one on the other side came and talked to them.
That's strange.
They asked to please not, I, I'm not saying their name because they asked, because of the relationship with the kids and the family. They just don't want a big stir.
Yeah, I, I, if you give me the name, I'll, I'll send a letter quickly on to that.
I got, I got, well, I even, as I'm driving by, I took pictures.
Okay, right, right, well.
Just for the record, you're not supposed to have your cell phone on when you have a lot of vehicles in motion.
Yeah, they're watching now.
I would be negligent if I didn't recite the law. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. It's okay, Gary, I'll show myself at the door.
Board of Works will address the mass mailing and then, but I will mail a letter to them as well. Okay, do we have anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right, all right.
Thank you.
Travis motion, John second.
We still got a statement.
I want you to register.
Oh, no, I know.